Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, virtual meeting of Zoom of the Thurston County Planning Commission. Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory commission to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive planning zoning ordinance amendments. I think commission actions are in the form of recommendation to the county commissioner, who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which public carings have not been had. Now, excuse me. So let's call calling this meeting to order at 6:30 here. And let's start with introduction of the planning commissioners. My name is Jim Simmons. I am from, I represent District Three. Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Scott?
Scott Nelson, District Three.
And Dawn? Can't hear you, Dawn. We didn't hear you. I'm sorry. No, something's going on. Still can't get you. Okay, let's maybe you can get with Paulie on that and we can kind of get you figured out and and hopefully it says you're unmuted, but we're just not hearing you. Let me see if I'm doing something here. I will work on it, Dawn. Okay, so I'm looking, well, I guess he won't. Let's do raise with the raising hands. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
And all those, is there any comment or anything? All those in favor, let's do a hand raise. Any opposed? Well, no, I guess not. Since we're only the five. Okay, so next would be an approval for the me- meeting minutes of November 17, 2021. Can I get a motion for that?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Any comments or nothing to, no changes?
Yes, I have comments.
Raise your hand, please.
I'm comment. I have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, on item six, line seventeen. It says next was a discussion on docs and platforms near residential. It should be discussion on viewing platforms near residential homes. So we did not discuss docs in that context. And then in the next line, eighteen, that sentence says for doc size, three hundred square feet maximum should say for viewing platforms, three hundred square feet max.
So I'm not a hundred percent sure, but can we get a motion for amended?
So I move to be changed, the minutes be modified as I just outlined.
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify, hand raise, thumbs up.
Hi.
I think we got you now, Dawn.
Wonderful.
Yeah, there you are. Good to hear your voice.
I don't know how I did it.
You're a technical wizard. Good to see, good to hear. Okay, so public communication. For this virtual meeting, please choose to raise the raise your hand option if you wish to address the planning commission. If you're dialing in, press nine to raise your hand. The chair hosts will unmute you when it's your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose number six to unmute yourself. Three minute timer will show on the video screen to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360 972 6785 to make your public comment. If you are commenting on the A seven low impact development targeted improvement, could you please hold off until the public hearing to make your statement so you're not repeating yourself? So again, if you're commenting on the public hearing that will start at seven o'clock on the A seven low impact development targeted improvement, please hold your comments till then. So so please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on any other subjects other than from the public hearing. I'm not seeing any raised hands. Oh, there you go. Looks like Howard Glassdanner. You're up. Did you unmute yourself, Howard?
Pardon me.
There you go.
I was not able to give my public comment on the twentieth of October because my Zoom software evidently wasn't up to snuff. I've, I emailed a, I emailed the notes that I was going to give it off of to Andrew. I can't remember his last name. And he posted them on October 21st, but I would like to orally express myself. It's actually a little bit more fitting today. So I'll start. Glad for this privilege. I submitted comments on the October 11th, written ones. And they're, they deal with the Niskali Valley, which Eric, I believe, represents. He said he's from District Three and another person, the man in the blue shirt, also. I'm commenting on the part of the, on the channel migration zone near the beginning of the Niskali Delta. I only saw two other, I only saw one other person make a comment from Niskali Valley, so I feel it's important that you hear from us and know what some of the issues are down here. The comments that I wrote on October the 11th covered mining, channel migration zone and replacement of the I five Niskali bridges. Interestingly, there was a large article in the Daily Olympian, the online version today, that covered the Niskali bridges and sort of touched on the channel migration zone. The there's a lot of discussion of the Niskali channel migration zone, but there is no mention of Alder Dam, the largest land, the largest manmade impact in the valley. Nor of the FEMA study that's changing the zone levels to conform to the flood zone levels to be the same as the levels reached in the February 1996 flood. The 1996 flood of Niskali Valley was a result of a predicted three day multi-state severe storm. Alder Lake Dam was seventeen feet below capacity when the storm hit. Tacoma Power at Alder Dam simply allowed the reservoir to top off on the first day of the storm. And then they had to dump on the last two days. That was a very big contributor to the Niskali flood. In fact, I would say it was a primary contributor with Mother Nature being second. This caused $20 million worth of property damage below the dam as well as about the same amount to the the generators at Le Grand. Shoreline. Coma Powers FERC license, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission license, has no flood control responsibility. And they should have.
And the master. I'm sorry, sir. I'm going to have to ask you to kind of wind up.
Okay, I will. All right, just a second. This FEMA study that's going on now wants to set the flood levels at the same levels as the Nisk- the Niskali flood of 1996. They want to treat the reservoir as always being full. And I want, there should be some mention that Alder Lake Dam is the elephant in the room and it needs attention rather than the free ride that they've been getting. Sorry, I didn't get through this quite in time, but.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Well, is there any questions about anything I've said, though?
No, we've got your notes. If they're on the record, we all, we have all the proper.
Should be on the 21st.
Thank you. Is there anybody else out there that would like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so we are going to move on. We have a little bit of time. Can can we get the, can we do our staff updates? Maya?
Actually, it's me. Good evening, planning commissioners. So I have a couple of updates for you. One is the Board of County Commissioners took action on the Tumwater joint plan and have moved that forward. That was actually completed. I have all my notes. There we go. Yes, yesterday. The Board of County Commissioners made final action. The version adopted included the section that recommended code amendments for consistency with the Tumwater Municipal Code. This was a two to one vote by the commissioners and the other joint plans will be moving forward and you will should expect to see those coming for your review in 2022. We will start with Olympia and then Lacey. The other update I have is the county has received a letter of resignation from Donna Nickerson from the planning commission. So the board has been made aware of that and will be moving forward to backfill her position. And the last I have is just a reminder to the planning commissioners that if they receive comments from the or receive questions about how to make comments to staff here, there is a comment form that the public can fill out. They can go to thirstyplanning.org and find that information. And if it's about a specific project, the SMP or the HCP, both of those projects have their own website, the SMP.org or Thurston HCP.org, but you can get to all of that information from Thurstonplanning.org. And it's a real easy click on submit a comment and they can submit any and all comments and they will come to staff and we will then disseminate those as appropriate. And that are all of my updates for today.
Thanks, Chris. Hey, I totally skipped over item four. I apologize. Andrew, can you get us started on the work session and recommendations for the shoreline master program? We got approximately fifteen minutes before that. So and then we'll come back to after, if we need.
Yes, yeah. Started. Can we go back to Christina for a second?
Sure.
Has Ed's position been filled?
It has not. The board is aware of it.
Okay, just so just for reference, our bylaws go by the number of seated planning commissioners. So until we have another planning commissioner seated, we, our quorum is only four.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, good evening, planning commissioners. Andrew Defogus, enter of senior planner with community planning. I'll go ahead and kick us off and get us started on the work session before the public hearing. For anyone watching at home, the, we are looking for recommendations in the planning commission on specific sections in the draft, but that we are not looking for a wholesale recommendation to the board this evening. So I apologize if there's any confusion about that on behalf of anyone who's out there watching. So tonight we'll continue to review sections of the shoreline master program draft where there were specific options that were left in during the public hearing. Those were inserted into the draft to elicit public testimony based on the planning commission's conversations leading up to that public hearing back on, you know, October 20th. And so this work is all in support of forming the planning commission's formal recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and we'll jump right in. We are going to start in chapter nineteen, five hundred, and we might only have one or two in there, I think. Okay, so hopefully folks are seeing a word document. So this first issue here has been in here for a while. And so as we were, as the planning commission was going through the draft, leading up to its making its final public hearing draft, there was a discussion here about whether the substantial development permit, which is a type of shoreline permit that some projects require, whether it should be more aligned with a type one or type two permit that, you know, the county uses for its other permits, or whether it should be a type three. The difference being if it was type three, it would, it would require a hearing examiner review. If it were type one or two, it would not. So subsequent to, or excuse me, after this conversation, the planning commission did move through chapter nineteen, six hundred, which are the permit development standards for all of the, all of the specific uses and modifications in the shoreline. So, you know, that was kind of a granular look at all the different permits that the public might be seeking. And the planning commission weighed in on each of those saying, you know, whether they should be SDP or conditional use permit, or should it be administrative versus not? So I'm not sure this still needs to be in here because the, you guys went and did the work later on to kind of carve those out, which should be in which bucket. So I, I think that the as written number two here might already stand, but I'm going to pause there and and see if there are additional thoughts there.
I think, Andrew, I think generally we've taken care of them in subsequent chapters, so trying to describe it here might be a little difficult.
I, I think so too. And there are probably some additional tweaks just in working with, you know, current planning and that are going to need to happen to this chapter as to how it's going to be administered, but I would agree with that. And if that's the planning commission's pleasure, I would recommend removing this option and going with the decisions that this body has made elsewhere in the document. And if there's anywhere else it's not clear, we could, you know, address that. But everything in six hundred, I think you've already taken care of. So I'll, I'll look for what your pleasure is there. I'm gonna okay, I see some thumbs up. Okay, great. You need to get better at putting your faces up here before I ask for a recommendation. So, okay. I will write that down to strike that option. And we'll let those other, other recommendations that, that planning commission made stand on their own throughout the document. Okay. Next one is all the way in chapter six hundred. We might be able to get through this. We can certainly try. Okay, so this is in the aquaculture section and this deals with specific standards for net pens and muscle raft operations. So prior to the public hearing, there were comments from ecology, you know, going way back and a conversation was had with the planning commission that this section of the draft talks about standards for net pens and for rafts. And the conversation was that, you know, this is appears to be all specific to net pens and doesn't actually have any language about muscle rafts. Also, the county doesn't really have net pen operations, but does have some muscle raft operations. So some cleanup was suggested here and there are sort of two decisions that are before planning commission or two recommendations or two decision points we're looking for recommendations on. And one would be whether we should remove any references to net pens and allow the general aquaculture standards to apply there if and when someone applies for that. And two, whether it's appropriate to consider any additional standards for muscle rafts, which is indeed an operation the county does have. And so as part of the review, staff went back and looked at at past permit decisions that had been made to see if there were any conditions that might, might be appropriate for development standards for those muscle wrapped operations. But there is of course also the option to not include those and allow, you know, the general standards to to be what are used and, you know, specific permit level conditions can always be imposed during that review. So that's the broad issue I would lay out there. We did get some public comment on this, but not, not a whole lot. So you know, did at least one, one comments came in that these might be more appropriate as permit conditions. DFW had some thoughts on it, but, but it wasn't, I didn't get a whole lot. So I'm curious about planning commission guidance on that, whether to remove net pen references and to whether we want to add anything for muscle rafts.
If you remove the net pen standards, what happens somewhere down the road, somebody comes along and wants to put one in or?
So a couple of things. The, the general standards for all aquacultural operations that have to do with sighting and, you know, how that operation is put together and how it runs, all those things are still going to apply to a net pen type operation. And also any other guidance or any other standards that are required by any of the other agencies that oversee these operations are also going to apply because the county is only one piece of, of that oversight. And I believe the state is working on guidance on these types of operations, but I don't think it's, to my knowledge, it's not complete.
What about net pens? Is there, would that be handled the same way?
I think.
No, I'm sorry, not net pens. I mean, muscle.
Yeah, so, so this stuff that's here in the text and the yellow is not technically in the document, right? It's here for review. It's not part of the draft. So right now, if someone came in for a muscle raft operation, we don't have specific standards for that either. They would follow the general, the general provision. So anything that's going to be aquaculture is going to have regulation under, under the shoreline master program. The issue is whether to put additional standards in for muscle rafts, you know, whether these are the appropriate ones or not. That's, that's the question.
So if I'm figuring if I'm not hearing this right, but it sounds like what we have here are additional to what's required by ecology and the state?
These specific, so these specific things you see here were were requirements of a past county permit that was issued on a past muscle raft operation. We don't have a whole lot of specific local circumstances guiding this, this piece. So aquaculture operation, you know, is going to have oversight by several other entities in addition to, to Thurston County. And if it's a.
Andrew, when this, when this went before the hearing examiner on the prior muscle raft permit, was it because of non-conforming use?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Was it because of sea or maybe a conditional use permit? The hearing examiner established these BMPs because of something outside of the ordinary aquaculture permit?
They were specific to that, that application. But that is one, you know, area that we will look at when it comes to drafting development standards that might apply to other operations as well. I think, you know, any of these things could, could potentially be applied by hearings examiner in the future if that is an application that, that would go before that.
I, I'm kind of of the mind that, that leaving these kind of BMPs to the hearing examiner is the way to go with this because every situation is going to be fairly individual and, and with the oversight of the feds and the state and then a hearing examiner, I, I don't, I don't really think that it's necessary for us to, to double up on this kind of stuff.
And I think I'd have to go and look and make sure we'd want to look at exactly what type of permit this would generate, right? Because if, if, if this body has suggested that that should be administrative, there would be no hearing examiner. If it's not a conditional use permit, there would be no hearing examiner. So I, whatever, however, this was, this one piece was done years and years ago. It did go before the hearings examiner. So let me and this might be something good for me to dive into while you guys have a public hearing, maybe do a little bit of research. So that might be a good area or a good spot to pause unless there are other, other thoughts on this specific item that other folks have.
I guess I'm just kind of curious is, are those for that particular project, is it more restrictive? Or are we just, or like what Eric was kind of mentioning, are we just duplicating what's already out there? Do we need to clutter up ours with that? I don't know.
Believe that. So those conditions that were placed on that project were not all part of county code specifically, right? They weren't all to the, you know, to the letter, you know, referencing code. It was putting best management practices in place that were deemed appropriate based on the hearing examiner's review, staff recommendations and et cetera. And I think this even went above. I, it's been on, I apologize, it's been a while since I've looked into this specific case, but this one kind of went, bounced around, it got appealed and, you know, conditions were placed from a variety of, from a couple of different places. So.
So I'd be interested in knowing whether a cup is, whether we have it requiring a cup or a
Well, why don't I take the next, however many minutes you guys are having a hearing and I'll see if I can look into that briefly. So, okay, well, I will go ahead and pause us there, stop sharing and let you guys get to your hearing.
Another question, Andrew, if there are state and federal, I mean, regulations, do we really need a county one?
Yeah, that's certainly a question that, that you should discuss. Okay. More to come.
Any other questions? Real quick, we got a couple of minutes. Okay, thanks, Andrew. We'll be back to. Get to my. So we got like a minute before seven. Any comments or thoughts from anybody before we get going here?
Yeah, Jim, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Christina a question real quick. On, if, if we're, if the county is going to embark on bringing on a couple of new planning commissioners in the, in the near term. I know on other boards and commissions, those applications come through for consideration by that particular board to, to forward a recommendation to the B O C C. Will that happen with these or will the B O C C make those decisions without our consideration or review?
I can ask that question. In the past, it's been, it has not come through planning commission, but Board of County Commissioners have made those decisions at their Tuesday morning meetings or at their Tuesday meetings, excuse me.
I just, Eric, I just kind of did, redid mine. I had to renew a few months back and it didn't come before this group. It just was stayed within the county commissioners.
Yeah, it just, it seems, it's different than, than how the other boards and commissions do it. And I don't know if that's by design or if that's just, I mean, this is, this board is a little different than all the other boards for sure. So the process being different isn't unreasonable.
For me, it was like putting the application to Mike, the commissioner, which was taught, and then it was voted on by the three of them. So.
We wouldn't love to keep you, Jim.
Well, I got an exit way to argue with you. Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's, okay, here we go. So. Tonight, today we are here to hold a public hearing on developmental, hold docket item. A seven low impact development code amendment. This is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, phone, emails in. In comment or mail in comment. If you wish to testify, please choose the raise your hand option. If you are dialing in, press nine to raise your hand. Chair will call your name and unmute you when it's your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose six to unmute yourself. If you have been, if you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect. From the Zoom meeting and call three, six, zero, nine, seven, two, six, seven, eight, five. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I will call out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And Paulie, could you review the public comment timer for us, please?
Yes, you'll have three minutes and the first two and a half minutes will be green. Um when you get to two and a half minutes, it'll turn yellow and that means you have thirty more seconds. Before your time is up at three minutes and then it will show red.
Thanks, Paulie. So please wrap yourself, wrap up what you're sharing within that three minutes and I hate. Having people off. So we're going to open the public hearing with a staff presentation by our other Andrew.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Bond with Community Planning. Uh today, we are here to hold a public hearing on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one official development code docket item A seven. Low impact development. This proposal will amend Thurston County's Title twenty zoning code. And Title twenty-three Olympia Urban Growth Area Zoning Code to amend development regulations related to land use and stormwater strategy. The proposed code amendments were crafted in a way that simplify existing regulations and resolve permitting issues for citizens and staff. Due to missing terminology with definitions and owner's tracking procedures. The proposal includes new de- new and amended definitions in chapter twenty point oh three Structures Interpretations and Definitions. New and revised code language on hard and impervious surface limits in chapter twenty point oh seven lot yard use and structural regulations. New and revised code language in chapter twenty point thirty planned residential development. New and revised code language in chapter twenty point thirty A planned rural residential development. And finally, new code language in chapter twenty three point oh four residential districts. Staff provided notice for this public hearing by publishing a legal notice on November eighth, twenty twenty one. In the Olympian. A web mailer was sent to interested parties on November eighth, twenty twenty one and a press release was issued on November nineteenth. The Thurston County Community Planning webpage has been updated with all available documents being considered at this hearing. As of today, staff has not received a single public comment on this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, is there any, anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody out there not seeing any hands as of yet? One once. Oh, there you go. I hope I'm pronouncing this right. Danny Taylor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Commissioners. Um this is Deionne Taylor uh with Taylor Shellfish Farms. I do not mean to be disrespectful of your time and the hearing on not the shoreline master program, but I did want to. Briefly uh reference you back to our August fourth comment letter regarding the muscle raft standards you were just speaking on.
Andy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there with this. That's not what this public hearing is for. You must have missed our uh. Comment period. I apologize. Um. I I'm sorry, is. Um, yeah, please come back. You know, I know, I know we've heard from you in the past and we appreciate your comments. But this isn't the proper form for that. We are talking about the L I D stuff right now.
My apologies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else out there? Okay, so we're gonna move back to Andrew or any comments from the. From the group, anything that to discuss about this? I'm not.
Andrew, did you say that you had, you have not had any comments?
I've not received any comments to date.
So you're looking for a possible recommendation? Could you just kind of go?
Yeah, of course. I actually have a slide on a presentation that I can pull up for you guys to consider. Um as the recommended motion, just give me one second to go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
I'll make the motion to, I'll move to recommend approval on development code docket item A seven. Low impact development, which amends the Thurston County Code. Chapter twenty point zero three, twenty point zero seven, twenty point three zero. Twenty point three zero A and twenty three point zero four. Related to low impact development regulations.
I'd second that.
To move in second to remove, to recommend approval of developmental code docket item A seven. Is there any other comments or thoughts from the group?
Yeah, I do have a question on section two. Uh number D, what says hard surfaces rendering, non-conforming and so forth. What does that really mean?
Give me one second to pull up. Which chap- uh chapter and section was that again?
It's in paragraph two, Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty double, twenty point oh seven. On D and it says starts a hard surfaces rendered. Non-conforming by the coverage limits of this title.
Andrew, this is page eight of your staff report in the code language.
Sorry.
I beg your pardon. Would you say that again, please?
Page eight of the staff report that Andrew supplied for this um planning commission here. Just so he can follow along with the section you're referencing, Don.
Okay. Um rendering non-conforming.
Andrew, I'm happy to jump in on.
Yeah, thank you.
Um so hard surfaces rendered non-conforming by the coverage limits. These coverage limits were originally adopted in the L I D code update in two thousand and sixteen. At that time, the county did a pretty big and robust update for the low impact development code. So there were uh possibly several. Um properties out there that may have had coverage on them that were beyond what the county was adopting in two thousand and sixteen. And what this clause is saying is that if there are hard surfaces rendered. Considered non-conforming that were previous to that adoption in two thousand and sixteen. They must comply with um the drainage design and erosion control manual. So it it just refers back to that manual, which is the guiding, the county's guiding stormwater policy manual.
Is this more or less restrictive than it was before?
This would be more or less cleaning up any sort of issues. Right now, there are limitations with the lack of terminology within the code. That make it in some situations almost impossible to do certain uh certain things on their property. So this is kind of leveling the playing field and allowing them to be able to do what originally was the plan. It just, the terminology. Never got added into the code. Um so it's been kind of a hole within the code and this is hopefully correcting that, those issues.
And I would add further that this um really gets that kind of the nuances for each properties. So the previous language said that these surfaces could only be replaced within the existing footprint. Um the drainage design, the erosion control manual is a little bit more specific on how it might apply to different types of.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If there's no other comments or questions. All those in favor, let's signify by raising your hand so we can make sure everybody's there. Okay, looks like we have a form. It looks like everybody's on to that. So, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
So we're moving back to Mr. D.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. Uh still Andrew Defobus, interim senior planner with community planning. One sec here. Okay, here is the um. The code section we were looking at or uh in SMP. And the option that was before the planning commission. So while you were having your public hearing, I did go back and look. So if there were no additional standards in the draft for either net pens or. Muscle rafts, shellfish muscle rafts, um those. Those uh uses would require a shoreline substantial development permit. Assuming they were not considered exempt. So they were under the the cash value that makes that exempt at the state level, which is the seven thousand forty seven dollars. Um, and so if they did do an S D P, a substantial development permit. That would require hearing examiner review as the draft is written and as the the P C affirmed tonight by having me strike that other option. Uh so it would be, you know, the decision would be made uh by a hearings examiner. Uh those, that permit would be routed to ecology for review, but not for approval. Uh ecology does not have approval authority over substantial development permits, but they are routed for review and they could always appeal, just like anyone else could appeal that decision. Um the the catch there is that for the natural environment for uh for operations that would require new structures or facilities. Uh it would be a conditional use permit. So in the natural environment, there's a chance that yes, that would require a conditional use permit. Otherwise likely to be an S D P substantial development permit unless it is uh exempt from, from that per the state stand. Uh state thresholds.
Andrew, looking at at the uh matrix. Um it it for other aquaculture. It lists P with a three for everything except for aquatic, which is a two, which is a. So. That's always been a confusing for me. Cause it's, the aquatic is always what's upland from it. So I assume in this case, it refers back to. The P with a, with a three footnote and the three footnote says a cup shall be required. For uh floating net pens. So it singles out net pens, but it doesn't say anything about the muscle wraps or. I'm wondering if we should insert under. Uh footnote three. Uh net pens and muscle wraps and whatever else there is, it's out there to. I mean, if we're going to single out net pens.
Yeah, I might have to look at that a little more closely. Um. I didn't catch that in that lightning, it just did. Um. Okay. Oh, okay. Um so again, oh, okay, yes, I see. And and for uh aquaculture activities in the natural environment. Okay, so you're right. So so again, but a net pen is going to be different than a, a shellfish muscle raft. Those are, so net pens are for fin fish, right? Uh the, so. Um theoretically, if you were offshore of the natural environment, right? It could potentially require a cup for a muscle raft, you know, if you're, if you're offshore from the natural environment. Cause that's what the other half of this piece says is, you know, a a cup is for floating that pans. Uh and for aquaculture activities in the natural environment where proposal requires new structures or facilities.
But if you, uh they do grow muscles in floating environments, correct?
Yes.
So it would be the same kind of thing that a net pen would be, except they. It's designed to support muscles.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different type of structure.
Right.
I think it's, it's, they're lower and all those sorts of things, but um I could take a closer look. At that specific piece of it. Um. I think the conversation still stands for the other, other pieces, right? For whether additional development standards. Are required. And I could, I could look more specifically at this piece.
I'm still of the idea that these other development standards being um implemented at the hearing examiner level is, is the best way to do it. There's, there's not a lot of muscle rafts out there and I doubt there, there's going to be a whole lot more. I think it's an individual enough kind of thing that having. You know, individual oversight from the hearing examiner is the way to go and and I don't think that we need to have blanket regulations because of that.
Yeah, so as long as we're saying in the, in the regulations, it's a, it's a P or a C, it's going to have a hearing examiner.
That is correct. Yeah, so absent any specific development standards, the general standards will apply. And unless it is exempt from that S D P based on the nature of the operation, it would require a full S D P. Which would require hearing examiner decision.
Yeah. I agree with Eric.
So that's, I I'm hearing to essentially strike what is the proposal for muscle rafts. Um so there also was that conversation then. Uh so, well, let's pause there. Um does that have? Support from the rest of the planning commission? See, thumbs up. Jim is nodding, Don is thumbs up. Okay, great. Uh so then I think we would also want to. Um, again, we have a whole set of standards for net pens, but we don't have net pens in the county. And so whether that information should remain in the draft or whether it should also come out. Um and you know, the general standards and any other oversight by any other agency also would, would apply in that instance.
I'd treat that the same as muscle rafts.
Yeah, so let me scroll down and we'll scroll beyond my giant note here. So these are the pieces that are specifically for. Net pens, which we don't essentially have. So we don't necessarily have a local circumstance and example to base. Development standards on. Um. So I'm, again, that was kind of the two-part issue here was whether to, whether to add something else, whether to keep this. So that's that question I would pose to planning commission, if there's a recommendation to remove or keep. Okay, so I see Eric wants to take those out. Is there support from the planning commission? Otherwise, and I I will certainly look and make sure there's nothing that should absolutely stay or that the ducks are not all covered above. But that's my understanding is we have that setting for, or whole section for standard. You know, general aquaculture uses, so.
Um, as long as we're using the, we we put in whatever we have to do to make sure that they're, they've complied with the other agencies.
Yeah, that, and that is whether we state it or not, that's simply true.
Okay.
We do state it. So, okay, um. That said, unless I see any objection, I'll go ahead and um remove those as well. And and like I said, just do a scrub to make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay. All right, so we will move on. I'm gonna jump down to the industrial chapter, industrial uses section. Pardon my scrolling. Okay. So there were uh. Th- this question uh centered around which shoreline environment designations are appropriate for and should allow. Uh industrial uses in our shoreline master program. So we did hear some support from the public in terms of limiting, limiting. Industrial uses in residential areas. Um and so kind of to sum up what I've heard from ecology in the past is that. Uh if we're going to allow industrial uses in the shoreline environment, it may be. the better approach may be to allow them in the rural conservancy environment, consistent with the WAC guidance. Rather than the shoreline residential or the urban conservancy shoreline environment designations. The reason being that shoreline residential said is intended for residential uses. The urban conservancy shoreline environment designation is prescribed to shorelines in the urban growth area. May already contain a higher level of residential development than the rural conservancy or the natural sets. And and simply that industrial uses may conflict with residential uses. So those are some of the thoughts on this issue. So that you know, the draft currently permits it in the shoreline residential, permits it in urban conservancy, prohibits in rural conservancy. And so the question is whether those should be adjusted. There are state guidelines on the specific types of industrial uses that are appropriate for the rural conservancy environment. So if that is the direction of planning commission, I would bring back in the as part of your recommendation, recommended language that reflects the the development standards and the type of industrial uses that are the state views in line with rural conservancy. And essentially it's low intensity water oriented commercial industrial uses may be permitted in the limited instances where they've been located in the past or at unique sites that possess shoreline conditions and services to support the use. So essentially, you know, the the state says shoreline residential may not be appropriate. Urban conservancy could be for, you know, industrial lammers. But there is an argument to consider that against whether you already have residential uses in that area. And then limited rural, limited development, industrial development in the rural conservancy, there's there's a carve out for that in the WAC. So that's a lot, but that's kind of the frame up for this this particular issue.
The other thing we discussed is is only where it is zoned industrial also.
Yeah, and I think oh, hang on, let me hide your faces here. I think we yeah, that's in the that's in here somewhere. I just I'm trying to remember if that is a general standard or if that is I may not be able to catch that. Okay, here we go. Yes, so okay, yes. So number two here addresses that. Doug, thank you. So water dependent, water related and non-water oriented. So that's kind of yeah, that's wrapping a broad arm around the types of uses you can have in the shoreline environment. Says they are permitted where allowed by zoning and this program. So if if it's not allowed by zoning, it's already a moot point. As far as the SMP is concerned.
So I'd be in favor of allowing it in conservance rural conservancy as long as it's per zoned properly.
That that was the ecology's guidance on it was to allow it in rural conservancy, but not in the others.
Was to consider that. Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. So if you look at the WAC guidelines on that on industrial uses. It's just absent from shoreline residential. It is mentioned briefly in urban conservancy. And it is, you know, very limited types of develop industrial development would be recommended in the rural conservancy per those guidelines.
Well, I I certainly want to keep it out of shoreline residential. And so I think going with those guidelines and with the allowance for it to be in rural conservancy of properly zoned is is good with me.
Okay, and again, that that just by default will involve, I will be looking at our development standards to make sure they are fitting in with what the state guidelines are in terms of making sure that it is any industrial development that's allowed. Fits in with that low intensity, water oriented type of industrial development, because that's the sort of thing when ecology is looking at this document against the guidelines. They're gonna say, where have you produced a document that follows these guidelines? So I will do that scrub and the next version of this that you see will show will show that language.
So it will be only for water dependent and water oriented and not other industrial?
So I'll have to go back and look at the the full WAC, but the notes that I have here is that it's generally speaking, they're not allowed. If they are allowed, it's low intensity and it's water water oriented. So non-water oriented would not necessarily be allowed in shoreline jurisdiction.
I'm totally cool with that.
So I think we should probably leave it in urban conservancy because, I mean, it's urban areas. It doesn't necessarily mean it's residential. It could already be an industrial area.
Didn't we look at our urban conservancy map and it was like there was hardly any of it? Scott, do you remember if there was anything in there?
I I don't remember anything, but I'm just looking, you know. Because urban conservancy, I mean, I know it's not near the water, but I would imagine if the port's property was near the water in Thurston County. That would be urban conservancy ground. And that seems to me that that would be appropriate. And if it's zoned that way, it's zoned that way. If it's not, then you can't do it anyways.
Yeah, from my review and what I remember, and again, I am not, I don't have all those notes in front of me. I looked at the in the shoreline environment designations report, all the areas that were designated as urban conservancy. And what the rationale was for that, was it because there were already existing industrial uses? And a lot of times where it appeared there was some type of, you know, dense development alteration of the shoreline. A lot of times it was commercial, you know, not necessarily industrial, but commercial. So and again, there's that's a whole other section of this document. If it's a commercial use and how you would deal with that, if it's water oriented or not. So I don't think there's a whole lot in the existing urban conservancy environments. I don't know that there's a whole lot of actual industry to speak of, you know, that's out there. So maybe we should oh, Don.
Question, a question. If I may, Jim, may I ask Andrew to move back to nineteen six hundred one ten B four?
I think that was the the agriculture piece. Is that right?
And the question is the definition of fallow. I looked it up in Webster. The definition of fallow is one growing season. So this doesn't seem adequate to address the concerns out there.
So I and I, you know, I'm not the boss here, but I would potentially recommend that we add that item to the list of things to for this body to discuss. I think there's support for it in the the public comment record. We heard a lot from folks about how the SMP affects agriculture. I think that's absolutely. Yeah, but it might be best tackled at another time. But again, I defer to the what the planning commission wants to do.
I think we can address it another time, but we've we've discussed it at length and it's not just agriculture. We talked about it relative to residential as well and that, you know. It's not abandoned until, I mean, there were, your answer before Andrew was there is a very specific definition of abandonment. That so if somebody, a military person goes overseas for five years and leaves their house alone and unrented, you know, that's not abandonment. And I would think that would apply to agriculture as well if they just don't. It's still agricultural land, but they're not using it for any of it. That's not abandoned either.
Yeah, I I think there is ample commentary in the public record on both of those subjects. If the planning commission does want to have a conversation about those items.
As long as we can have that conversation prior to the time we forward this on.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. And so, yeah, we had that initial discussion after the public hearing. You know, about topics that that we're gonna that I'm gonna bring back for you prior to that recommendation. So if there are things, you know, that 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 anyone wants us to look at based on that public comment, you know, we want to discuss that. Or I want to discuss that with this group and get the buy-in from the PC as to, you know, what's on your agenda to look at. So I rephrasing that another way, if there are substantive is items in the public comment record that this body wants to address before they make the recommendation to the to the board. I mean, that that's certainly appropriate.
And that addresses my concern and I look forward to talking about it later.
I think what I and maybe if there's some time at the end. So I don't want to derail from going through these options one by one, but maybe at the end we could kind of circle back to that. Because because I would appreciate having, you know, putting getting sideboards on that so that I know what to go out and look at. And, you know, we're specifically looking for looking at specific code sections and specific changes that that planning commission wants us to explore.
Add it back to my list, Don.
And I kind of had a hunch this would come up based on, you know, things I have that have been forwarded to me recently. So, yeah. Okay. So I'm wondering, so we can steer back to the industrial piece here. I'm wondering if the best approach might be to just tee it up for each said one at a time and then get a get a hands or yay or nay for each one, if that is reasonable. And I can try to sum up what I've heard from you so far and and propose something and please correct me if I did not get it right. So I'll start with the shoreline residential environment designation where as currently the the proposed draft would allow it. But I've heard that that's not something the planning commission supports. So is there general support for prohibiting industrial uses in the shoreline residential said? So, okay, I'm seeing raised hands. And so Scott and Don, how about how about you, Don? Okay, okay, great. All right, writing this down. So then we'll move to the urban conservancy where currently, again, the draft currently permits it. But I, you know, and there's, I think there's a case either way, but I heard some I can't remember Commissioner Nelson, if that was you that said, let's consider keeping it in the urban conservancy, but I'll start there. Is there support for continuing to allow industrial uses in the urban conservancy said? So Jim saying yes, Scott is saying yes, Doug is saying Doug is shaking his head. How about Don and Eric?
I'm indifferent.
Well, might need you to do something different. Don, you had a your hand was up. Oh, you're which which way was that? You are
In favor of it.
In favor of allowing it. Okay, so that's I am sorry, so painstaking here, but I saw three people say they're in favor of allowing it. Doug said no. Eric, what what say you?
I I think on that particular SED that I I don't think that there's any industry that will commence in that SED that isn't already there. There won't be any new industrial there. So allowing a provision for it to happen on the miniscule amount of urban conservancy SED we have, I don't think that it is necessary to allow it.
Okay, so that was, oh boy, so three of you said, take it out. Two of you said not to, but that's not a quorum either way. I'm trying to think what happens if we don't do that then. But let me record that for now.
Maybe we can circle back on that one at another work session and I'll rethink this through analyze a little bit better in my own head.
Yeah, okay. And essentially yeah, but I guess the way I would summarize it, I'm just taking my brain a minute to process here. The question had been phrased. Change this or no, I think, you know, three of you said essentially don't change it because that would allow. Two of you said change it and disallow. We may need to circle back perhaps. We're narrowing it down though, so I'll at least record what I have there and maybe there will be you know, additional thoughts at another work session. So then rural conservancy, right now it is prohibited. So, you know, is there support from planning commission to allow industrial uses in the rural conservancy environment, consistent with what the WACs are going to provide for? And I see Jim and Eric and Scott are nodding. Okay, great. So rural conservancy allow consistent with wax. Okay. And I wonder if okay, are there thoughts on? And I could put something together in terms of the permit that may be appropriate for that when a conditional use permit may be required or appropriate versus an SDP, because I don't, I don't know that you want to necessarily guess at that. But if there are any thoughts on that, I could have happy to pause for a moment before we move on. Okay, all right. Well, I'm just gonna
I would assume that there would be a cup. Because it's a major impact. The ecology would be involved, at least be an SDP.
Well, and I think, yeah, looking at this, that would make sense to me because if we're if we were already going to require it in these other environments, it may make sense to require it in the rural conservancy environment, which is you know, a more ecologically intact environment. So that may be, yeah.
I mean, that's what number two says here.
Right.
Is a cup for those that are allowed, so.
Right, okay. Okay, I'm gonna put down to consider that just based on what the other said had said. Okay, great. Okay, so moving on, we're gonna move on to mooring structures where I think the majority of the comments remain. Okay, so as you can see here, the public hearing version of this draft, we I redid all of the permit standards to reflect the planning commission's conversation and reflect what we all the work we did up in the table and essentially broken out by environment here. So there was a lot of conversations about marine versus lakes, you know, and what makes sense, different permit standards. One piece, so the planning commission put in in the natural environment to allow docks with an administrative SDP and prohibit them in the natural environment in marine water. That's what the that's what the draft stated. But there was an option put in for public hearing based on your conversation to consider allowing docks in the natural environment in both lakes and marine shorelines. So as far as public comment, I mean, there was general public support for allowing docks. There were some specific comments saying, yes, allow this. But there were also comments saying, you know, don't allow further development of shorelines, period. So there was kind of both of those things. I know that DFW through their comments supported not allowing docks in the natural environment. And, you know, I did hear the same from some citizens. Ecology has stated that. So the question for you essentially is whether to allow them. And if so, you know, what is the permit that we would require? And this is specifically for marine water, because as as written, this draft already allows them in in lakes. So everything, you've heard it all. So now it's, you know.
You're saying this would only be for Marines then?
So
In the marine environment, I mean, as far as as I understand it, they're not allowing any docks in the marine environment, period. No matter whether you're in residential or anything else.
They they who?
They are ecology.
Yeah, so and you know, any other, just like aquaculture, any other agencies that that must approve these types of structures are Structures are gonna have their say, and if there is something more stringent there, that could potentially stop a project. Um, you know, whatever we put in the master program doesn't, it doesn't alleviate them from needing to get other permits or approvals, and I'll have some further comments on that when we get into some of the other. Pieces in this mooring structures, but, um, you know, we're kind of looking at the conceptual. Level. So originally there was, um, the conversation with planning commission, so docs were. Pro- proposed to be prohibited in the natural environment, and the planning commission said, you know, we want an option to allow those, and then in the meantime. You know, these permit standards got split out between the natural, or excuse me, between lakes and marine shorelines, and. When we went through this the last time, you know, planning commission said. Allow them in lakes with administrative SDP prohibit them in the marine environment, and so that is an option you could you could continue to go with. Um, so your option is to essentially change what's written in number one, if that is, you know, the. The direction that the PC wants to go.
I I'd like to know what if if we allowed it, would would it be prohibited anyway by other agencies? I'd like to know the answer to that question.
And so I know the DFW is another agency that, you know, they issue the hydraulic. Project approvals or hydraulic permit approvals in the saltwater environment, and they have specific standards. They have specific standards that all projects must follow, but they also, you know, they have a pathway for approval. Um, but if you are asking for more research into kind of the overall regulatory pathway. Doc on the marine environment might face, you know, that's something I'd have to research more.
I'm kind of with with Doug on that one. If if it's prohibited elsewhere. Why are we even having this discussion almost?
Okay, so so perhaps then, uh, just to. Cut out having to circle back and re-circle back, um, I could perhaps. You know, I could do that look and based on what I find, um. You know, either propose to leave it as prohibited or potentially allow it if that's what you want to see. So that's what I'm kind of hearing is if if it's something that would be allowed by other agencies. Go ahead and allow it, um. But if it's likely to not be approved, or there's some sort of, you know, big. Brick wall someone's gonna hit to leave it as prohibited, is does that sound reasonable?
I I think that does. I think that for those mer- natural marine areas. I prohibiting it seems a little too final if there is a path forward through the other agencies. But if we are going to allow it, I think making our our, um. Permitting process the most stringent that is available to us would be appropriate.
And I think that would be the the conditional use permit or the the variance, yeah, so. Okay, um. Okay, so Doug and Eric seem to to, uh. Support that approach. What are the rest of you think? Yeah, okay, all right, so I will do some more research, uh, if it is appears that it's. Hard stop, uh, elsewhere prohibited here, um, if allowed, comma, allow. And, um, yeah, consider. You know, what the appropriate, uh, permit that should be. Put on that. Okay. Okay, great. All right, so we're not moving far here. We're moving down to the next page, I think. So there the draft previously is part of the application standards for, uh, a mooring structure. Required an applicant to demonstrate that and before getting a, you know, a single. Dock, right, um, they had to to demonstrate that alternative types of mortgage were not going to be adequate or feasible as part of their application. Um. And there was some support from the public for taking that out, you know, and and. Supporting that option you see there highlighted in yellow, um, I know that DFW supported keeping the language. Um, but really this is up to the planning commission and whether, um. You know, this kind of ties back to that general like known at loss and mitigation sequencing and trying to do. Limited modification and, um, you know, the the least amount of. You know, where authorized that that shoreline modifications should be limited in scope and extent, you know, that that's the guiding principle from the WAC, so I think that's. Kind of what's at play here. That said, um, you know, this specific. Piece here is not, to my knowledge, is not a requirement in state law. So are there any?
I don't think we should require.
Oh, I don't want to require that.
Before. I mean, in in real life, most people, if you're on the marine environment, most. Residential pe- uh, landowners are gonna put a a mooring buoy out there because they can't afford to do a dock. Um. And and, um, I got a lot of friends on on marine environments, they all have more a buoy, so in a practical nature. Making things easy, you know, they're gonna do that anyway, so I don't think we need to require that here and on a lake. Um, requiring them to to prove they need a. I don't need a mortgage buoy first, I mean, they're they're just gonna build a dock anyway, or they're gonna trample the shoreline, getting their boat in and out to go out to. The boat that's more. So it would be less impact on the shoreline if you allow them to have a dock. So that's my philosophy anyway.
Okay, uh, what do the rest of folks think about, uh, the proposal to strike number eight here and not require that?
Strike it.
About Jim, Scott, or Don? See. Okay, Jimmy, you were muted, but your thumbs up, okay, great, all right. So that will strike that requirement, and I think there is maybe one other place in the document where that comes up, uh, and so. Well, I can. Well, we might actually see it, and if we don't, I'll find it and we'll be consistent. Okay. Ah, there it is. Okay, uh, so there's two spots and, um. I'll take that piece out of both. So the next one, um, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't have a whole lot of. Background on this piece, um, but essentially the draft. Uh, talks about covered mortgage and it is only referencing residential use. It says nothing about commercial or industrial use and. Uh, you know, I remember having this conversation with ecology and then saying, you know, there are other jurisdictions that have. Made a case for or have had commercial and industrial entities make a case for allowing this. So you might want to consider that, and we left this draft, this option in here, um, to the public to see if there were any that would. Come forward. I didn't hear from any, you know, I run this type of company or et cetera, you know, I didn't hear any of that, I think the. The where I'd heard about it before was, you know, and like the somewhere on the Columbia where they had fireboats, right, and they wanted to have. Mortgage for the fireboats that are more down there, so covered mortgage. So I don't know that this needs a whole lot of belaboring or not, uh, the question is just whether there's support for, you know, allowing commercial or industrial. Entities to do covered mortgage for for boats.
Would this apply to a marina on the saltwater? Marine environment?
Um. I suppose it would, just given the fact that. You know, commercial industrial is, uh. Pretty broad, so as as well, I would say as written, this option asks that question, whether that's appropriate, right? So I don't think it's saying yes or no, one way or the other. Um, so it's looking at whether there's a ca- like a case for allowing it, and you know, of course, I'm gonna have to. Look at it like with everything else, go ahead and look at, make sure that, um, we are addressing that, any decisions in the cumulative impacts, um. But I think I'm trying to. Off top of my head, I don't recall what the marinas section boating facility say about that. So I I actually, uh. I would say no, because this section of the document specifically is for mooring structures that are, um. You know, for they're not boating facilities, right? A boating facility is is, I think, five or more or ten or more if you're marina, and that's covered. Elsewhere, so I think this is for things other than marinas.
But it's talking about mortgage, so. So it's like the fireboat example that you were talking about or.
Exactly, yeah, the.
Uh, yeah, aquaculture having a a a. A dock and and parking their boat at it.
Yeah, so this was left in here to see if there was, you know, is anyone gonna bring forward a burning desire to to. Support this from the public and did not really see that. There was not like a, I, you know, specific. Industrial or commercial use case that was brought forward in the public comment record.
In general, I'm not opposed to covered mortgage. And the reason is, I mean, the 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 reason it's out of favor is because it creates shade. That's why, as I understand it, Department of Fish and Wildlife doesn't like it. But the dock and the boat that's sitting in it already. Shades the water, so the cover is not doing anything in addition to the boat. So I'm, you know. I don't see any difference whether it's covered or not. As far as shading is concerned.
Mm hmm. And I think that might certainly depend on the specific type of. Cover you put on it and whether how tall it is and all those sorts of things, but. I think it's it's a fair point that you're gonna have a dock and you're gonna have a boat anyway, um. That, you know, that's gonna be providing shade when that boat is parked there and the dock will always provide shade, but that structure. And, you know, I think to your point, it just depends on the size of it as to what additional impact it might have. Um. So. Okay, so let's see. So the question would be whether we're striking. Uh, or whether there's support for striking single family residential. From this, right, and it would just say, you know, covered mortgage. Uh, is prohibited, it would prohibit it in the natural environment, but allow it for all uses elsewhere if I if we. If that's the decision you make and that I execute. So Eric, I see you are supporting that, I'm I'm. Forgive me, I'm trying to read between the lines of everything I'm hearing, um. So Eric and I. Doug, I think you would support that as well, or your general support.
I'm I'm not sure that it makes any difference whether it's in a natural environment or in the residential environment. Um, we're talking about fish here, we're not talking about shoreline ecological function.
Well, I think and the natural environment that came around as part of, um, the pre- planning commission's last discussion, so. The phrase in the natural environment was introduced based on planning commission review. It used to flat out prohibit. New covered mortgage for residential mortgage, um. And then that was changed to allow it in the shoreline residential, the urban and rural conservancy, but prohibited in natural.
I'm fine with that, Andy.
So. Okay, so you would be.
I I don't mind prohibiting in the natural environment, but but, uh, allowing it in the others is is good.
Right, yeah, but then the question is residential versus other types of uses, which is really the. The issue. So is there? Broad support for changing this, or or should I just leave it, leave it alone and? Move on.
I'm fine with leaving it.
Kind of borderline, but as as right now, I'm fine with leaving it.
Okay. Not hearing, uh.
Uh, P, let me just look at my notes. This is. Hundred. The long section. One sixty. C, P, right?
I think so. C one P. Well, I can. Leave it for now if there is not, um. Overwhelming support for changing it, it's also, you know, you've been at it for a while, so. You know what my mental faculties are doing, uh, okay. Okay, um. Okay, so. I can keep going, uh, or we can pause and have the conversation about, um, agricultural. Stuff, because then that can give me something to actually, you know, dig into and and come back with. So is there? What's the pleasure of the planning commission?
Dig into what, Andrew?
Um, I I. So the I can keep going cuz we do have like three or four more of these subject matter areas. Go through, um, or we can kind of talk a little bit about. The agricultural. Item that Don mentioned, um, so that I can. Give me some, you know, some stuff to go on that I can then go and, um, do some research.
We've got five minutes before our scheduled adjournment.
That that's why I'm.
Um, so, and. Will we even at Don's, will we even get that question done?
Well, we could, we could give Andy some ideas of what to look at on when considering fallow and how the SMP treats aquacultural. Aquaculture fallow, I mean, we can probably run through that real quick, couldn't we?
Well, it's agriculture was the specific.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Uh, but so it, but you know, there is a similar. Issue in the aquaculture industry as well, and so if I if I think what we heard from. The public was, um, you know, that the draft SMP makes a statement saying if your land is laid, being laid fallow, um. Just based on agricultural practices, uh, based on, you know, crop rotation or whatever myriad reasons there may be to actually follow land as part of an agricultural. Operation in your strategy, um, that it's not considered abandoned. Um, but you know, we heard support from the public that there are additional. Um, considerations where someone may not actively be farming, but they have not abandoned the use, and there was concern that. As written, you know, that the. Users would be kind of pigeonholed into it's these circumstances where you're fallow, other than that, we're gonna consider you abandoned, and then all the standards of the SMP would apply if you. Want to, um, you know, resume that operation.
I think, Andrew, part of the concern is the definition of the word shallow. If it means just for one growing season, that's not adequate.
Mm hmm. And I don't think this draft specifies, um. So that might be something for me to look at, what's the definition and where all does it apply, um? And then, you know, you guys could have a conversation about. Additional. Areas you might want to see, so additional. Case studies where it might want to apply, so perhaps I could, um, do some research, uh, or at least and then, you know, kind of point you to some of the comments specifically. Uh, and that might guide the conversation cuz we want to route, you know, any review we're doing from now. You know, we want to keep it based on what we've heard in public comments, and, um, like I said, I think there is ample. Information in the record to support a conversation on this.
I'd like to know the definition of fallow because that. Public comment said the definition of fallow was. You still till it. But, um, don't grow anything. But if you don't till it. It's not fallow, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I I that doesn't make any sense to me either cuz you can be fallow for reasons other than. You don't think that you're gonna get a good grow, you could be followed because. You didn't get enough rain that year, so why would you tell?
Yeah.
So I looked this up this week cuz. I didn't know, but according to the dictionaries, yes. Fallow includes cultivation. Um, my a couple thoughts on it, number one. Especially with the new technologies now and us having. More pasture land than cropland in Thurston County. Uh, no till is a real thing. And. So even if you replant it, you might not till it. Um, the other thought I had was. Thurston County has a policy. No net loss of ag land. So. I don't, I mean, even if I abandon it, how is Thurston County gonna? Balance that with no net, if I come back. At whatever time and say, I'm gonna farm this again. How how are we gonna balance that if? Shoreline master program is gonna say, well, you've been out this long, you can't. It's not farmland anymore.
Yeah, and there, I think there were. There were a lot of public comments to that effect. Yeah, and there, I think there were, there were a lot of public comments to that effect.
I would never have attached the word um, abandoned to farmland. That's just out of my realm of thinking. And so I don't, I don't, you know, I just don't abandon, if, if they abandon the farm and the barn's falling down and the house is falling down, they've abandoned the, the house and the barn, they haven't abandoned the farm.
Well, if the, if the use is not ongoing, technically, they would have abandoned the use as well. That is, and so it's, it's trying to put parameters on when it's abandoned, you know, what, when is something truly abandoned versus when is it perhaps not active, but that use has not been had done away with, or has not been?
Isn't farming a, like a fundamental use, though, that by default, everything could be farm? It should be.
I don't think the draft does that as written, so if that, you know, that's a great question. Um, and I know, for example, with aquaculture, you know, the draft may, and, and the wax too, I believe there's guidance on this, of a variety of different scenarios where, you know, maybe they're not, they're not doing the active operation, but there's a number of reasons for that. It could be nothing related to, you know, them wanting to do it. It could be water quality conditions, it could be, you know, a whole host of things. And I think the question is, are there additional legitimate scenarios that this draft should consider? That's what the, but that's what was in the public comment that, that I, you know.
I, I think it's very dangerous to ever call any tidelands abandoned either for aquaculture purposes, because there, there are plenty of tidelands and, and that have been sold as oyster tracks by the state. If the state sold it as an oyster track, you're never gonna be able to say that you've abandoned oyster farming there, because that's the most ridiculous thing ever. So I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with any kind of language, whether it's agriculture or aquaculture, saying that it's been abandoned. But I think that's very dangerous territory, and I wouldn't support going that direction.
And I agree with that, and I think it should be struck from the, from our discussion here.
So that would require some analysis from staff to go and look and, and I think it would require perhaps introduction of language, if that's the direction the planning commission wants to go, introducing language that makes that statement. Um, but you know, trying to figure out, are there legitimate cases where something should be considered abandoned, and therefore, um, you know, new requirements should apply when that use resumes or, or not. I mean, I think that's the, the conversation that, um, you all should have, uh, after we can put together some some stuff for you to look at.
Actually, I think that the only time that a farmland would be abandoned, when, when somebody proposes to use it for a different purpose.
Yeah, and, and conversions to other types of uses would be regulated by the appropriate sections of the SMP. If someone wanted to convert farmland to residential development, for example, and it was along a shoreline, I mean, the, all the shoreline provisions of, of, all the residential provisions in the shoreline master program are gonna apply at that point.
Andy, how tough would it be to, to have something that says that it's not abandoned unless it's been converted?
Uh, I'd have to look into that and come back and, and and let you know, but we are, yeah. I don't know. But, um, I can certainly tee that up for, you know, the next time we get together, if that is the, what the planning commission wants to see.
Seems like that's the direction we'd like to at least pursue, so let's do that, Andrew.
Okay, so I will try to send you as part of that, um, send you, yeah, some of the relevant language, uh, and, you know, perhaps some of the comments that were focused on that particular issue, because like I said, we want to tie things back to um, the, the record. Okay, uh, well, I can take a stab at it. Um, if there's nothing else, um, I would propose concluding the work session.
Thank you, Andy, this was good today.
Thanks, Andrew, great job.
Thank you.
So we need to address our calendar. Is there anybody that will be missing the December fifteenth meeting? Don, you rascal, you.
Maybe.
And how about the the January fifth? And so it looks like everybody will be there for that. And please, you know, if you know anybody that's in your district that they have a vacancy, encourage them to send in an application, just get these positions filled somehow or another. Um, and I just want to take a moment, I see a couple uh, attendees with their hands up, and I want to apologize to you folks that just be aware that the time for public comments are set aside the agenda, and we don't take public comments while we're, we're having discussions. So please come back at our public comment times and let us know what you're thinking, uh, or send in a letter to, uh, staff, and we, we see those too. So I apologize, uh, but we just don't take public comments as, as we're in our session, in the middle of our session. So if there's nothing else, I think we're adjourned. Okay, guys, thanks.
Good night, all.